Under God, in the visible, liberty and justice for all.
Okay, we will have a roll call, including new members? Yes, are you kidding? Kim is on top of this one.
Joseph Britton.
Here.
Shalaski is here, Nathan, Rosa Gladysso, Barbara here, Richard Towney.
Here.
Patrick Johnston.
Here.
Richard Cora.
Here.
David Trina is not here. Emmanuel Palmeiras.
Here.
Dr. Patafessa.
Here.
A Salina.
Here.
Alright, recognitions. Jody Huzina. Program facilitator chosen as Theater of the Year by CAA CE.
Yes, she did.
Since you're here, thank you. Thank you everybody very much. I said to Dr. Sal real quick and I said, do you want me to jump on the mic? Really? You know me, I don't need a mic.
This way goes on the record.
Oh, okay. Okay, how's that?
Perfect.
Back it up a little bit. So, for those of you that don't know me, Jody Huzina, I'm the program facilitator at Adult Education. And what I just wanted to take a minute to say, that if you don't know about what adult education is, we would love to share it with you sometime. Our office is located down on 10 Crosby Street, and we service adult learners from the ages of seventeen all the way up to sixty-five. A lot of people think that adult ed is just a GED program, and it is so much more than that. We have over nine hundred students, six hundred of them are ESL students. We run a citizenship program, an adult basic education program, and two high school completion programs. This year, we're proud to have over a hundred and sixty students, mostly Danbury students, in our credit diploma program. And hopefully, we have over sixty students graduating with their high school diploma this year. So, we signed invitations to our graduation, which is in mid-June. I think it's gonna be like before DHS, and we would love to see some of you there. So, thank you again for the opportunity to work in this program and to really make the difference in lives of some wonderful adult learners. And it's an honor to be in the district and a privilege to work with them and all of you. So, thank you very much.
Dennis, can anyone stand up for a second?
Yeah.
He runs the program for us along with Jody, thank you.
Yes, I'm the director, thank you. Okay, and the NAMM Foundation announced that their schools is now a 2019 Best Communities for Music Education School District, and we have another certificate for Jill Russell Benner.
Sure, we can do pictures on great.
You wanna say something on the little pictures?
Sure, the NAMM Foundation is actually supporting. Thank you so much for hearing. The NAMM Foundation is an organization that actually supports a few of the great programs that we have here in the Danbury Schools. And we were one of eighteen school districts in Connecticut, six hundred and twenty-three nationwide that were recognized for this honor, and it's really a tribute to, I'm gonna embarrass our staff.
In fact, where's the staff? Stand up and get behind the floor.
Yes, please.
We asked you to, we're gonna do a little number here.
Do you have the music?
It's all in there. Go in there. Yeah, where is it?
Also, there's another one coming down.
You're probably entertaining.
There you go.
But I'm actually gonna make them all introduce themselves. They're an extraordinary group of people that really want to part with them. I'm gonna put you all in spot. Introduce yourselves.
Mary Peters.
Where at?
Oh, Brody Middle School and Danbury High School Orchestra.
In the new art, in the new artory of the high school?
Yeah, in the new.
How's that working out?
It's good. We're adjusting to be, we're getting there. It's actually too warm, which is never been a problem before, but it's a beautiful place. It sounds, this sounds just wonderful in that space.
Brian Howe, I teach piano and strings at the Magnet School, Ellsworth and Aitken.
Skip Jennings, and I teach general music and chorus at Ellsworth and at Moore Street.
Nicole Cardamon, I teach general music at Shelter Rock.
Liz Daninow, I teach band orchestra and theater at Westside Middle School.
Amanda Wood, I teach pop players, sixth grade chorus, seventh grade chorus, and rock in a rush park.
And I'm Deborah Morrison. I'm at Great Plains School and Pembroke School, general musical chorus.
And I can, if you know me, you know I can talk, but I think instead of hearing how the music program impacts our students, for me, I think it would be best to hear it from our students at home tonight. So, if you guys, I know that you're kind of prepared to talk a little bit about your experience in the Danbury Schools and the music program.
Yeah, we have one from Rush Park, one from Westside before. Can you say anything about music and what experience in the district?
Yes, you know.
Sammy.
I have managed to taste those race.
There's a mic up there so we could hear you.
Extra credit.
So, I have managed to taste those race. I played the cello and the piano at Danbury High School. I started playing the cello in, I'm so sorry, started playing cello in third grade, and it helped me a lot, you know, not only with, you know, school happening at the time, but frankly, I didn't have any friends in school, and, you know, music helped me do that. The music program helped me, you know, create new bonds with people, meet everyone, and now I have this sort of friendship with a lot of people that I wouldn't have been able to do without the music program. So, they helped me a lot.
So, I'm Griffin Sun, also in the Danbury High School Orchestra. I play violin. I have since third grade. And to explain the talks, I thought it was gonna be a chamber performance tonight, and this is our performance attire. One of the things our orchestra does is we play while people are showing up to meetings, and we do events in small chamber groups, and it's a really great experience. And to my teachers of learn, actually, Ms. Daninow and Ms. Peters, I went to Westside Middle School, and I also had Mr. Solzicki in elementary school at Stadlera. And it's orchestra has just been such an amazing experience, and music in general, the curriculum is just so well taught, the teachers are enthusiastic, and there's just so much support for it in this district, and it's been such a rewarding experience for me. And, yeah.
A tremendous thank you to you as the board of education and administration people. Without your support, we would not be able to continue to do what we did. So, thank you very much.
Thank you so much.
Just to the board, say, you know, every year, we have to make cutbacks, and the board has been appreciative of the program, and I don't think the general public realizes the impact a music program has on students. Hearing this is really important. You know, we don't look at it as an extra. It's co-curricular. It's embedded in the work, makes it critical thinking, it makes it really a special place. And when we talk about worrying about sustaining programs, this is why we put the effort in that we do and try to fight for the resources that we get. It's for you, the program, because it makes us a special place. So, thank you to everyone for this award. It's a tremendous award, and I will say, we were not here a few years ago. The department always had it. Jill, you were able to bring it up and showcase it for the district. Brittany, appreciate it by me that you've done this. So, thank you.
Everybody in.
Can we squeeze everybody?
Put Jill in our board chair together.
I'm the tallest, I'll stand in back.
Come on in. I'll hide in there.
Uh, yeah, let's see.
This is your guys' photo. I do, that's my best picture.
Shingle it up, how about this? Let's go all these chairs, have some seats.
Look at this.
Alright, so let's put you down with your beautiful certificates. There you go. Okay. You know, they're sitting down here, she's done this before. Go in here.
How good is that?
Okay, one, two, three, say achievement. Everybody, every time. Thank you. So, Jill and Jody also have a team. You guys have a good seminary.
Okay, public participation. Lori Woodroft. The director.
Good night. Thank you for coming.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
I just, I just wanted to do a follow-up, a huge thank you to Pat and Rachel and anyone I missed who was able to come to our Theater Magnet production of Twin Dorella last week. It was a huge success. The kids were so proud of themselves. I think the parents were too. Rob Cody is the father of one of our supporting actresses. But they did such a great job. I hope they learned a lot about themselves, and I'm just so grateful that you came. Thank you so much.
Thank you so much. It was a wonderful show, too. Everybody did a great job.
Thank you.
Okay, and Mr. Jannelli would like to speak on the public participation.
For the recent day, this really has nothing to do with board business, but it's just an update on Denver Playground. It's beginning, we're looking for grants on August first for cutting. I think that's a bit optimistic, but things are moving ahead nicely. Just to let you know that we're gonna have a charity golf outing up at Oxford, the Oxford Green, on April thirtieth. It'll be at nine AM. It's a hundred and fifty dollars a person, six hundred dollars for the course, and then include lunch and other things. So, I know it's still a school day, but do you have any friends or do you have any sick leave?
If you want me to play golf at sick.
But anyway, I do have flyers if anybody's interested, or if you know anybody who's interested in helping, let me know. I'll furnish them a flyer which has more information on it. Then I want to say a thank you to Dave Graphic. His school raised a thousand twenty-five dollars for us, so that was an interesting endeavor to do. We have other schools that are in the process of doing fundraising for us, such as AIS, King Street, Broadview, and several others that just haven't finalized the programs yet. We did receive a check, and they said we could announce it. We picked it up, ten thousand dollars from the owners and foundation of Chuck Steakhouse. So, that was a very handsome, that was a very handsome check, very nice. We got a check the other day for five thousand dollars for one of the senior executives in Denver. I don't wanna mention the name because, you know, they didn't tell me to do it for the name of the company. So, checks like that, we really like to see. The, it's funny, the donation slide, then you get some of those pretty checks, and it makes you feel good. We've got, I'll pick a number close to maybe eighty-seven thousand, maybe ninety thousand dollars in money. So, we're hopefully halfway, halfway there. Texas Roadhouse has contacted us, and they're gonna do a fundraiser. It's gonna start, I think, tomorrow through May tenth, where if you win it and borrow a gift card for an appetizer, I think five or ten dollars, a hundred percent of that money will come to us, and Texas Roadhouse will donate the food. So, that's another, they said they did something for our vet, veterans, excuse the administration a few months ago, and they raised six thousand dollars. So, I'm pretty optimistic about that, and seeing the May between Mother's Day and some of the other holidays, we're hoping to get some publicity in there. So, I just thought I'd bring that up. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Mr. Jannelli. And that's it on the public participation. I have listed, is anybody not on the list that wanna speak? Anybody? Okay, great. One housekeeping issue. We were, had some, people have made some approaches to me that keep the order and the meetings moving along. So, apparently, I've been remiss in keeping the meetings from running on for too long. So, if we can get to our points, ask, you know, questions, we don't want anybody to feel that they can't, but, you know, get through the questions, stay on point, because the meetings are going on for a long time and people wanna go home. So, that was my fault. Bad chairman. So, and then moving on from there. So, we are going to move directly to the consent calendar.
I move that the Board of Education approves the items on the consent calendar, exhibit nineteen dash fifty-five through nineteen dash fifty-six as recommended.
I have a second.
Second motion.
Second by Mrs. Cooper. Any discussion? All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Staying. Motion carries. I don't have an employee representative. And we do have a student representative, I can see over there.
Who's the first one in here?
Good evening. It is an honor to be here once again to speak in the head of ACE. On Friday, March fifteenth, six ACE students went on the starship with Rob to participate in this class workshop that allows students and teachers alternative programs from around the state to interact with the upcoming stars conference, which serves the purpose of highlighting students' projects that have been developed and cultivated during the 2018-2019 school year. On Monday, March eighteenth, twelve grade chemistry students took a trip with chemistry teacher Kathy to the North Walk Aquarium Wednesday, March twentieth. ACE held our career day, which was organized by Diana DiNardo. Career day allows students to choose four workshops to attend that serve the purpose of promoting wellness and care for others in the form of career opportunities. Workshops included speakers from Danbury Fire Department, Danbury Police Department, music production, yoga, culinary, making a first impression, comfort dogs, music performance, meditation, energy work and healing hands, and a design your own technological space workshop. After lunch on March twentieth, the top four of ACE was set up to host our first Shakespeare fair. The Shakespeare fair was for the entire student body to enjoy, engage, and have fun learning with one another. The fair was a social studies and English collaborative with Cali Tracola's Modern World Studies, Daniella's Four English Ones students, and Joanne's English Four students. The fair included sixteen stations designed and hosted by these students. John won the paper airplane contest with a paper airplane that went fifty-three feet. It's all the same, ha-ha. The A U S practice, Halloween payoffs. Morawak Valley Community College, Danbury Summer Program, is in the planning stages, and ACE is working to offer ACE students summer courses at Morawak Valley for hospitality and food services, Microsoft certification, and CNA. On Wednesday, March twenty-seventh, the ACE eleven graders put their best efforts into the SAT, which is overseen by Cali Tracola and his SAT team. On April third, a US history and English three collaborative project on oppression culminated in group project presentations occurring during the morning block of April third at the Westcon Student Center. On April fourth, there was a follow-up focus group on the district's equity statement with these same students facilitated by Judy Coco and Calvin Wolfson. ACE students were happy that their voices, experiences, and thoughts regarding equity were valid. The new ACE website is complete, and we invite all of you to check out what is happening with these at our house. Last but not least, I want to finish by saying, may America always be above everything and God above everyone. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Okay, presentation. Mr. Cody.
So, I try not to be too long. It's okay with you. I don't know about everybody else.
I get the blame for everything.
Well, then I'll just go ahead. I know how you feel, so. So, I was planning on having, go ahead now. Well, first and foremost. Well, first and foremost, my name is Rob Cody. I'm the director of Free Legion and Access Programs at Western Connecticut, and I wanna thank you guys for this opportunity to be here. I plan on having some students here. I did have a couple of students who had gone through our middle school program, our high school program, and then got into our college program, but they're in the middle, believe it or not, of studying for finals and stuff like that, and they're pretty stressed out. There's also illness going around the school, so I don't know if you guys know that, but it's happening. So, I'm here, holding forth down. So, what I'm here to talk to you guys about, last time I was here, I was able to bring some students, and we were able to talk a little bit about our minority bilingual teaching pipeline, which is in its sixth year right now. We're gonna graduate one of our students next year, so hopefully she'll find her way into the Danbury school system. But what I'm here to talk about a little bit today is expanding on what we did with the minority bilingual teaching pipeline, and through a grant I wrote for the federal government for our upper bound programs as a supplemental grant. They were looking at STEM programs. So, we were able to write a supplemental grant to mirror our minority bilingual teaching pipeline, but for STEM students interested in STEM fields. So, what we were able to do is to develop an MOA, get it signed by the president and by, you know, superintendent here. And so, for thirty students this upcoming summer, you have the sheet right there, but we're gonna be able to offer both a teaching pipeline and now a computer science pipeline, which is CS one-ten. And we kinda fixed the whole dual enrollment issue. So, the kids are getting credit in high school now for the teaching pipeline, as well as getting the college credit in college as well. So, I mean, this is just another great opportunity for our students to get college credit at the same time as going to high school. It's worked great in many different aspects. Some of the students have understood they don't wanna be teachers, and some of the kids understand they don't wanna be computer science majors. But then they don't waste their time, their money later on when they go to college. So, it's an important, it's an important aspect. We've emailed this to Megan Martins and Vicky Carlson to distribute amongst all the students at the school. So, again, it's not just our upper bound students that are open to this program, it's all the students at the high school, you know. So, there is an interview process that's involved, but again, you know, we're able to have thirty students in that program, which is really good. That's a lot more than teaching pipeline. So, I'm excited about that. Questions, comments, concerns? Go ahead, please.
Just wanted to really congratulate you guys in expanding the program. I think also one of the partners of adding computer science pipeline, although, you know, I am vice and absolutely love the minority bilingual teacher pipeline, I think this also provides more opportunities for boys, because I tend to see more female students gravitating towards the minority teacher pipeline program times that I visit it, although we do need more male teachers. But unfortunately, that's just how it appears to be, and I think that this would also give an opportunity for boys to have a professional experience before they make their final career choices.
So, I agree with you, but the funny thing is, is the largest deficit is females in computer science.
Okay.
So, I'm in, I, you'll probably like that too, right? So, but honestly, if you look nationally, there are no women getting involved with computer science or engineering, and part of this is to get some females involved with that field. But I'm working on those boys, too, trust me.
Yes.
Yeah, I know.
Go ahead, please. Slide in now.
Just for the board, you know, I mean, the work that we do at Westcon has been tremendous. And Rob Cody, Rob's been in charge the last few years? Is it before? How many years now?
This is my fifth year now.
I know. You took over. My point being, he has been aggressive going to DC, finding grants, making sure that this all works. But in that, his wife is a teacher in the district, and understand the value of really working with students educationally and setting goals. And the programs have been just outstanding. The youngsters coming out, you witnessed them last year, they're just solid, and really, really proud to be able to articulate the program. We have no, I say this sincerely, we have no problems. It's seamless to agree with the president and with the high school staff, which it takes and works out real well for us. So, thank you for this.
Thank you, Sal. And another thing that, you know, I want the board to understand is that having, having me previously worked for the district at one point, and obviously Jessica, you know, and living in Danbury and things like that, that ultimately affects the students going to the college. One of my other hats I wear, amongst all these other hats, is the EAP, Director of EAP, which is letting in students with lower SAT scores or students who have just a C average come to a five-week summer component, you know, at the college. And I've seen a lot of Danbury High kids come through that, and I give them a little bit of extra leniency to get them in, and that's part of having me there, I'm telling you, you know. And I'm seeing a lot of those kids do really good things. And so, we have, we have that program that's going on, and, you know, we wrote another grant that's helping, and actually, I wanna say like fifteen of them. Listen, you have to prove you're, you're not doing great to get money, but in that, there's always good kids involved with these programs. We wrote a grant that got thirty academic, students that are on academic probation in the fall off of academic probation. Ten of those kids were Danbury High kids, you know, that had come and taken like anatomy and physiology and bio. Frankly, they're advisors. They come to us, you know what I mean? And so, they found themselves on academic probation. The chances are, if we can get ninety percent of those kids off academic probation, I'll be able to go get more money, and then we'll be able to get like sixty, seventy, eighty of those students. You know, and a lot of those kids aren't Danbury High kids, because they're coming right, right from Danbury High into Westcon. So, we're doing a lot of good things. You know, to get Danbury, kinda get them up. So, thank you guys for being good partners. I mean, really, without you guys, we don't do it. So, thank you so much. That wasn't too long.
Action items?
Action items.
I move that the Board of Education approve the revisions to the 2019 twenty-soul calendar in accordance with nineteen dash fifty-seven.
Second?
Second?
Mr. Petropisla, any discussion?
I just need to point out one thing. In working with the teachers, this is before school begins, we have three days. We needed three days to work with teachers for doing our PD work. We have that, and the fourth day is volunteer day. So, those teachers that are here that wanna come in and work in their rooms will have supplies in their rooms, and they can do that. So, you can ask coordinate that. I just wanna thank the board for doing that.
Thank you to the teachers. Any other discussion? All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Staying. Motion carries.
I move that the Board of Education set the high school graduation date at June nineteenth, 2019.
Second?
Second.
Second by Mrs. Cooper. Any discussion? All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Staying. Motion carries. Superintendent's report.
I'll keep A to last. Legislative update, we, the last one we ever recall, Brian sent us this spreadsheet, and we kinda commented on it, and he's been calling us every day about updating this. The latest today was about the.
The starting of the Civil Lunch Trace, that bill that is probably going to, going to be.
The status of the lunch trace, that bill that is probably going to, going to be, wherever bills go to die, it's, the impact of the state as a whole is about $3 million across. I mean, it's a good bill, but, you know, just the cost is, it triples the cost of cap trace, so.
Yeah, that was just for our school system.
Yeah, it was about $150,000, $175,000 for us. I mean, again, great idea, but, you know, until the cost of those trace comes down, it's just not going to be...
Or you got to pray that the price of lunch grew up, which we're...
Yeah, one of the...
Yes.
You know, the other thing is, again, they're at their best, but Hartford's requiring us to, to do some things that are going to cost us money. Two wonderful courses that they want us to develop, one on African-American studies, one on Puerto Rican studies, Latino studies, which is fine, but there's no resources to do it, but right now, it's moving forward if they do it. We have to develop two courses instead of units of study, which are wonderful, rich cultural units, but if it happens, we'll have two new courses in addition to the 25 credits that we have. If they do that, we're lobbying that somehow it gets counted into 25 as well, so those things are still going. The big thing for us has been the school safety bill that is still moving through. I'm extremely concerned about that. We have no money in our budget to handle counseling, diagnostic work, or support work at all if it moves through, and we keep talking to appropriation about if it's approved, the impact it's going to have particularly on the city, not to mention, I think it will put us in a position where we'll be over identifying and discipling minority students is much, is our prediction. So, that's still moving ahead. The pension bill, for teacher pension, did not make it out of committee, and so it's not recommended. However, Joe, you're talking to Ryan, he had indicated to you...
Yeah, it's, some of the CCM, I guess, and some other groups up there view it, it wasn't astronomical cost, and so they do think there is a chance it'll come back in, either through appropriations and finance or legislators find a short term, but it's, I think it's more likely than not, so we need to mindfully.
So, with that said, having lobbyists, we talked to Ryan with the strategy of being a priority district, and I think we're the only priority district that is paying the 25% because Danbury, in a good way, is not considered a distressed city. That puts us in a category of paying at higher rate for our teachers. If we can have something attached to the bill where all priority districts who are receiving funds, because we are indignant in many ways, that's why we're receiving the money in the priority district, that we be held harmless and get into that category, that's a great savings for us. So, that's our strategy with that, with that one. I don't know if there's anything else?
Just so the board knows, the appropriations and finance committees will, in a sense, put forth version of the Governor's Budget or modify the budget, that'll be early May, so more updates on when that comes through, and see what comes out of those committees for ECS and sort of things, so.
And if, and what Dr. Sal said there, if we were, the priority schools were, districts were to be put in that, it would be 5% versus 20%.
Yeah, we would drop the pension, I, you know, fast math, we'd probably go to 200,000 a year currently, half a million, so we'd drop, give or take, I mean, we don't have exact numbers, I want that to look like when it comes through, but it would definitely drop our amount. The Mayor's Budget included in the, in the documents stated that the pension piece would come back to the board, and that the 5.1 million is, really comes down to about 4.7 million when it boils down with the pension piece, so, the way it sits now.
Okay. Thank you. Core visit, I mentioned, you want to mention Karen?
Yeah, you were supposed to.
Thank you. I don't know if you have any questions or legislation, but I'm sending you the updates, and if you have some questions, don't let me know, I can send them up to Ryan. So, you can send them out on Friday.
Okay. So, on, on March 27th and March 28th, we had a visit from Core a few years ago. If you remember, we had a visit from Core district-wide to come and give us some, some feedback and utilize their expertise in our literacy program and how we're servicing our students. We brought them back this year for two more days to come and give us a little bit of some focused attention on our ESL programming and how we're delivering those services and how students are experiencing our curriculum in the Core classes. It was, it was a great day, two days of visit. We had Stadler, Roth, Moore Street, Park Avenue, Pembroke, and Ellsworth participate. We had administrator focus groups and teacher focus groups to sort of dig in and reflect on our practices and our work, and have an opportunity to hear from the consultant on some of her ideas on ways that we can improve, as well, as well she identified some of the strengths that we currently have got. She said she was in the district a few years ago, she did notice some, some nice improvements, particularly around K5, with the way that we structured some things, which were some nice kudos for staff, but she also had some, some suggestions of improvement, and she's going to be sending to us in a little bit more of a formal report, and we'll be developing some action items around how to make continued improvements in those areas. So, it was well worth it, and we will continue to work on our ESL program in the long run.
Kay Pauls, you got it?
Good evening, everyone. So, Kay has concluded its preview of our policy manual, and has made some recommendations, so I just want to share that update. One, their first recommendation is that we, for our manual itself, that we have a table of contents outlining the entire, entire manual, however, we do not have that. Secondly, they have recommended that our regulations are actually part of the manual and available online for everyone. Three, they have access to, as part of the update, make sure we reorder our policies to be consistent with the Kay policy manual. And then last but not least, the implementation plan that we had talked about before would be a two- to three-year implementation plan. We have a number of policies that are mandated, two of them which we have recently updated ourselves, and then we would have 15 more to update immediately, and then Kay, series by series, zero series over to 9,000 series, and they would send updated policies to us by series on a monthly or every other month basis. So, we have a work cut out for us, but we have our two-year implementation plan to make that happen.
People's second, our ears are...
We need to schedule a policy meeting. Several.
Yeah, like almost like, almost standing meeting, event through the fourth, it's how it becomes that.
Yes, we've, we've actually had some thoughts about being a little creative with some meetings, and I don't know, now's the time, or perhaps our next policy meeting, but we've had some thoughts about what that could look like.
So, schedule our first initial meeting.
Four.
Policy committee?
Beginning.
Someone's going to go off that.
I don't know.
Well, we have a, yeah, um, how, how long of a period of time do you think we need for that first meeting?
Let me, let me just, I did this once before, then, what they'll do is, they'll do these in groups, and they'll send it to us, send it to us, and then we call a meeting, but I think the first meeting is just an organization, so you won't need as much time. Just kind of look at that. And then, we talked to Mr. Mestero, he will start, you know, he's got some laws that are changing now, so he's going to take that, and then he'll be putting together the mandated policies, send them to, and then we'll start scheduling the work. So, the first meeting might be just to take a look about when you, which stage you might, when the groups might be ready. Sometimes it can meet during the day, if people have the time, or before meetings, however you want to organize. So, call first meeting for organization.
The only other thing I would add is that remember that we're going into negotiations with teachers and with paraprofessionals, so if you sit on those two committees, you're going to, and you do policy, you're going to be involved, because they will all kind of amp up right at the same time.
We have, our next meeting, we have the workshop, I don't know when the...
Oh, yeah, 4th.
What? The 24th, there's a workshop at 5:30, and then the board meeting on April 24th, so that we can't put it, obviously, we can't put a meeting before that. I can, how can we, moving into May, is that too far out, or?
No, that's what I'm saying, he's not going to, he's waiting for the law to change now to get updated for something. The first one is just, I think, just calendar, basically, right?
Is that recurring need, right?
Yes, that's right.
Maybe it would be great, isn't it?
Okay, so, we can schedule 15 minutes.
Do you want to do it, do you want to do it at, we'll finish up the board workshop at, at 6:45, and, and run it from 6:45 to 7, and then do the board meeting on the 24th? Just 15 minutes for scheduling? Perfect, okay.
You can call Mr. Mestero and ask him if he has a target timeline, when he might have the first batch for the board to look at.
Okay.
People's second meeting.
We had a meeting on April 2nd. Dr. Sal and myself, several members of the People Services team, our head of Nursing and Health Services, as well as two representatives from Danbury Hospital or the Western Connecticut Health Network, and it was a very exciting and collaborative meeting. We have a follow-up meeting scheduled for right after the April vacation. A couple of things that we discussed, of course, we're going to look into piloting a committee that would have representatives of the medical community, as well as the school community, to case review, and see how we can work together collaboratively to get resources in both the schools and the community to support our youth, to prevent the need for youth hospitalization related to mental health. The other thing that we're going to work on partnering on is re-looking at some of the paperwork that they do, such as discharge summaries, once students do go to the ER for mental health needs, and how we can better collaborate to get the proper information to Danbury Hospital, and then also the information back to the school district on how to support our youth. The third thing that they were going to look into is they took, they were very open to listening to some of our feedback and regarding the fact that Danbury Hospital does not currently have a youth ward for both the Crisis Intervention Unit, as well as not the capacity to have inpatient at Danbury Hospital, so they are working on some partnerships as they are expanding their network of where they can maybe have places available for our students and children should they be needed, but also they were open to considering and looking into possibly sectioning off a youth part of a crisis intervention unit, so no official decision, but they were open to looking into that. And then the last thing that we talked about was also 211, which is a mobile crisis unit that can be called by the school district, by families at home 24 hours a day, seven days a week, even open on holidays, and so oftentimes, when, when families leave, the emergency room, after, after a crisis intervention experience, they sometimes have follow-up needs, and so Danbury Hospital is going to look into partnering families that are before discharge with 211, because they will case follow a student for up to 45 days and even longer if needed, so if the youth goes home and the family has a question or concern, they will have a contact, a contact person through to 211, which can meet them in their home, anywhere in the community, to provide support for families. So, I'm excited about our partnership. They were very, very open to providing us feedback, listening to our feedback to them, and I think it'll be an exciting partnership.
Very open.
Was there another meeting that you guys were scheduling?
Yes, we have a meeting scheduled for the week after spring break.
Okay, thank you.
Legislative update, Joe mentioned the May date, that will impact the kind of work that we do regarding the budget. I thank those of you that came last night to our budget subcommittee. As a result of the meeting, the subcommittee recommended the adoption and the approval of the Mayor's Budget. The Mayor's Budget, the Mayor's Budget, in it, in its operation budget is approving 2.2, 2.2 million. The other 500,000 that the Mayor spoke about was the money that we were, they're expecting, I should say, from the development on the west side of the city, and then the other money that is in the Governor's proposed budget, which I'm hoping is approved in May, brings it up to 2.4 million.
2.4.
I believe. In that aggregate, the expectation is that ECS money, 500,000 would be removed if we're not considered distressed city or district, which brings us to 4.7?
4.7.
4.7, and as you all know, we asked for 7.7, in a real way, a maintenance budget, so we have a work cut out for it. So, what we, what we've already done, we've already had some speech in language folks this year, because we have been out, we can't provide those services, we have obligated services, so we're hiring those positions that are crucial and are explicit, either in special education, bilingual education, and service providers. We're going to have to wait until after the May date to see what in fact is happening up at the state before we start looking at hiring other folks. We had anticipated 25 retirees, every year, we do get retirees in that, and the budget between a person leaving, they're at the high end of the scale, they're returning, the delta is about, anyway, we have about 70,000 in the budget for those, and we put in 25, and to date, we don't have 25.
No.
So, we're closely monitoring that. So, these are all, say this is iterative budget, I say more as I cook sand in some specs, because it just keeps coming down, and I'm trying to find the bottom here, and I think after May, we'll have a better idea. If the, if it comes out of appropriation, we keep calling up there, we can't get an answer to, what do you think about the 2.4 million dollars? We can't seem to get an answer, other than what Ryan says, there hasn't been a lot of talk opposing it at all, and using R, but that means it'll go through, we're hoping. So, we'll know more at, at that point. You have some names?
No, it's, pension piece will be a wild card, I mean, it's all iterative. One other thing I do want to update the board on, just a concern, the current budget, I usually do it at the second meeting, we are seeing an uptick in our placements for special education, and that number's further north. It's just becoming concerning, I wonder what the number is. Right now, we're projecting about 450 or half a million dollars in deficit in that account, because all their offsets hopefully inside the budget, but I've shown up the board now, it's becoming an area of concern. It always is, but it's, it's a, right now, the budget is 155,000, 175,000, and next year, the budget, that's something we have to look at and evaluate as it goes through the budget process itself, whether we move that number or not.
You've, you've budgeted 175,000.
And increased for tuition, and right now, we're about 450 to half a million over, so that number's got to come up as, as part of the budget process for next year, which is equally concerning.
So, for the board, you're doing your budget now. July 1st comes, is this year, we open schools September, October, November, and what's happening, you'll hear this word, excess cost. What happens is you set a budget, no matter what you put into it, if you have transfer in, and that's what we have, we're at three for the last three weeks.
In the last month.
And those are in the last month, unanticipated, unbudgeted, and that's been happening right along. The state has a remedy for that, it's not the best remedy, they know it's going to happen, and they do what they call excess cost reimbursement. Once you, once you pass four and a half times...
Four and a half times, you have per pupil...
You have per pupil, they will, they will supplement the school district. It's not a dollar for dollar, it's 80 cents on a dollar. We don't get that money. It goes to the town, just so everybody understands that, I keep telling people, go to the town. People believe it's in our allocation, but it is in, in, we hadn't anticipated that allocation, because we didn't know it was coming. So, when Joe says we have to mitigate it, what happens? There are things we don't do. There are things we don't do and anticipate, and it's, it's, some of them is high, but it can get this high. Kids can move out as well, you know, if somebody moves out, then you don't have that, so we don't know that, and we won't know that until springtime when we have any exiting interviews. So, that's how this all comes about.
I mean, typically, we can also go PPT and change a placement mid-year, that may not be expected, so it's not something like a traditional enrollment where someone starts the school year, but particularly this year, there were three kids, like Dr. Sal said, within the past month, that moved in without a district placement that we absorbed that were unanticipated. 175,000 dollars in next year's budget will really be tuition and transportation increases, it's not additional students and out-of-district placements, so that's a concern of mine. And just as Dr. Sal had mentioned, the excess cost that we filed March 1st was the last time I filed that, we filed 3.1 million dollars in excess cost to the state, and so that reimbursement at 70%, depending what it is, goes directly back to the city of Danbury, and doesn't, there are some districts that it goes directly to the cities, there are some districts that it comes back to the town, so that if there are increased special education costs, that money offsets those costs. We currently do not have that as a, as an offset.
Just last thing for the board, I mean, your budget is large enough, but when costs get around to half a million, it becomes concerning to me. 100,000, still, still over, but, you know, when you get north of those numbers, that becomes concerning to me, so I think if we can mitigate it, I don't think it's in the world, but it's just, it's always a, you know, I always try to keep you guys aggressive, at least what I know that's truly, you know, could be alarming out there, just concerning. I think it's mitigated, we got a couple offsets, but it's definitely concerning.
Just a question regarding the excess cost reimbursement, is there anything that we can do as a board in terms of, like, policy or anything that could ensure that those resources are funneled to the board rather than...
City council.
Other than those guys.
Yeah, it's, it's standard practice in City of Danbury, has been for the last 20, 30 years, that money comes inside of your allocation, I mean, others, to Kelly's point...
And there it stays.
What?
And there it stays.
Yeah, it stays inside there, so in a sense, if that number fluctuates, it's baked into your number. I, to Kelly's point, these couple kids would hit excess costs, and you... I, to Kelly's point, these couple kids would hit excess costs, and you give at least a little piece of that back, and reality is kind of sits over in the city's books and squares up on their side. So it's, it's not uncommon, other schools do it, I mean, everyone does it differently, but it truly doesn't come back to us.
So there's nothing that kind of the board that we can?
No, I mean, there was talk here, it's called mandating it through some legislation up the state, and that kind of got mail-in.
I mean, we continue to talk, at times, we've spoken to the town and said, look, you know, we may have to have that conversation this year. Depends on how close.
Yeah, I think we, we, we've gone down that road.
If we have this issue, that, you know, you help us with some of the expenditures. It was two years ago, and.
Oh, all right.
It was a few years.
Yeah, yeah, three or four years when you.
Whatever. So we may have to have that conversation again, and then we're meaningful to it. We had the evidence like this. It's not just hit Danbury, it's hit the entire state.
No.
But it is money that comes in and something that we need to speak about, particularly when we're seeing a 2.7 million dollar reduction. I think the timing is perfect to have that conversation. All you can do is say, no. But you can't say no to the placement.
No.
So we're clear.
One of the other things, though, that I just need to highlight is to continue to build and strengthen our district programs. You know, the board has allowed us to create several different models in district, and it really has done a phenomenal job of maintaining it in our district and providing them appropriate services. Those come at a cost, but definitely less of a cost than placing a student out, and the benefit of keeping them in our community and educating them here is significant. So I think the more we can continue to develop, you know, stronger programs in district to provide appropriate educational support to our kids is about to go.
Yes, Mr. Jannelli.
This is the first year that I've heard public statement by the mayor, where he included the address in terms of the education budget, the alliance funding, which made it sort of complicated, particularly going last night when we talked about 2.1 or 4.7 number, which included the 2 plus million dollars of the alliance money on top of the 2.2. Yet, last night, and I think even some of the council members, you know, were a little bit confused when their, their motion dealt with 2.2. Your point was well-taken, that we're counting on that alliance money, whether it comes from the state or not. But, you know, I don't know what we can do, but I think that's something in your value at that door, or whatever it is, that door channels, to make clear that we need the 2.4 million of the alliance, whether it comes from the state or not. But it was confusing yesterday when publicly, and in the press and all that, it was a higher number that they did the funding of. But this year was the first time that it was put in and made things a little bit confusing. Also was very interesting, I think last night was an excellent dialogue. We didn't focus on numbers, but on concepts, and I think we got our message across, and I was really surprised when the council members didn't understand the effect of the poverty level and what its effect on children were. And thanks to Karr, explain that and the effect of the dollars. So we're getting our message across, and the number of years that I think we planned that we need, that we use the word coalition for us to join together, finally, last night, they themselves came to that revelation that we got to band together and to see where we can get funding, as opposed to not only the city of Danbury. So it was a good, I think last night was a good presentation, and we discussed issues and realities of life, as opposed to going through, you know, numbers which are, you know, not meaningless, but I think they have to understand substance and judgment is time to drop, too. So it was a good job. Don't hurt my feelings in that much, I mean.
Just for the board, those standing, the way, the law has changed somewhat. Lloyd's first stat, I guess, all monies came through the district, and then we had an application. It was never given to you unless the state approved the application. What has changed, last year, Governor Lloyd sat aside the districts, the school districts, and the towns by saying, the ECS money, they renamed the Alliance to ECS, Educational Cost Saving Grant, and it was then given to the city as a pass-through. So theoretically, it's to the city now, it's their money, part of the ECS, part of the 32 million.
The base ECS to the city is 22, next year will be 33 and change for the city.
So if you see, if you see what they, what he did, well, the cities were saying, you're not giving us our ECS money, you're passing it through here, you're playing with house money, give us back our house money. So now, that money is part of the appropriation that goes from Hartford to the city, then we have an application, we still have the application, we still have the accountability, we still have to close the achievement gap, we have to do all of that, but the money then is allocated to us from the city. It's a big difference.
So the 1 million dollars that supposedly this year is a pass-through through the city, and there's no obligation on their part to give to them?
I didn't say that. What I'm saying is that categorical grants come directly to Danbury Board of Education, untouched. Block grants go to the city. This block grant has a definite earmark for closing the achievement gap on application. If you read the law, what it's saying now, 50% of that money can go to operation, the other 50% has to go to closing the achievement gap. Right? That's how they modified the law. But it's no longer a alliance, it's ECS. So now Hartford gets credit for giving Danbury 32 million dollars.
Something plus 11.
Versus only giving the city of Danbury 22 million dollars. And so that's, and Mark has been passing that money through, I said that a year. He has been passing it through. Some cities have been fighting with their boards about keeping that money. We have not had that fight. That's why I think you heard him the way you did. To answer your question, you know, we need to park outside to the government, because we need the 2.4 million, just to get us to cut the differential, which is enough and hard enough for us to do after hearing.
Yeah, the differential's 3 million dollars if we get the force stuff, so it's 300 come down.
It's quite a bit.
It's not insignificant enough.
So I'm done.
Facilities update.
We did run, I spoke to Michael McRone, we did rerun the data for the, actually, we just got it, I'll send it off to the board, the King Street campus, we drilled out that, originally, she had merged those two campuses together, and we also moved out Mill Ridge as well, and looking at that data, so we do have that information to share. I'm not sure we're in a site meeting, it's on the, on the calendar, pencil that in somewhere, we can send for some of that information as well, and kind of give a little more, starting to move ahead with the idea of, I know the mayor was talking as well, about a bond referendum coming up and everything else, so we can kind of begin to solidify ideas, at least that we want to pursue. I think that West Side still looks like a good option, we could just continue to work that through with them. Antonio, he said we'd back it back at the speed now, so I think he should be getting re-engaged in what's going on with that.
We're, the challenge is coming in, we're trying to locate some property for, you know, the early childhood program. And that is, he's looked at a few sites, not too successful, by the way, so we still need to be looking at that. We looked at something today, but that'll probably be used for adult ed, it's not conducive for our early childhood program. So I hope in the next facilities meeting, we'll have a little more information for the early childhood classrooms that we need.
I know they tracked it as well, I'm trying to track that down, see when that's up to do. I was trying to get all the intent today and yesterday, you know, but I hadn't told that it was done, but it's on the street, as far as I can say, but, I don't know.
When you know, Joe?
Yeah.
Let.
Yeah. The world, definitely. I mean, as you heard from there now, I don't think it's going to be done for next track season unless we get a really favorable summer and fall.
Mr. Jannelli.
I noticed in today's news times about a company called Sperry Danbury has relocated, I think it's Shelton, they were located on Shelton Rock, early.
Oh, the big Sperry building?
Yep. It's 10,000 square feet.
That's a pretty building.
Again, in the concept of us looking for places, because we came on market, so to say.
The Ridley Road, the Ridley Road was inside that building, they vacated. It's a complicated building, it's a mixed office space, so kids, and in a sense, it's kind of a whole corporate office park, so that it was kind of strange setup. We did walk that some, some months ago. There is some classroom space in there.
The way money flows through us, I hate to take anything off tax pros of regular board, you know, we're looking at some, the city owns a lot of property, a lot of buildings, and I just think we need to be looking at those free ones, and a lot of the respect, so we're still looking.
Those are very good, very great.
Well.
We can, we can squat.
Joe, before interest to the Black Box Theater up at the high school, have that been taken care of?
Tom has looked into it, they're evaluating the frost, even happened on that front side. I know he's having a contract open as well, I haven't got a further update, but the last email, Dr. Sal, I did see was they were looking at the heat, what the issue was, whether the ground oil had gone underneath there or not. The warranty does not cover, in a sense, I'll call, I would say the natural condition of the free, the key to the asphalt, so we're looking at an option there, but we did look at it. More updates on that one, though.
At last night, I want to go back, at the budget education committee, there was some discrepancy within the budget. That Mr. O'Tello brought up, and the enrollment that Mr. Lee spoke about, and he also talked about in our book, there was 250,000 dollars that was for a head start. I thought that had been removed out of our budget.
Inside.
And we also, he talked about the class sizes, 1-on-1, from a couple of years back up until now, that were discrepancy in those numbers. And I think that needs to be cleared up.
Yep.
When they sit down and look at it, because that education committee's been around for a long time, and they just don't get.
The discrepancy in the city budget report was, those FTEs are on the city, are paid by city tax dollars, so that those are 735 somehow teachers, and we divide that out on what's in grants and what's not. So those are actually paid by city taxpayer dollars, where like the Alliance, for example, is another 104 FTEs inside that, so we separate those. I think it's about the same, like, to even footnote that somehow in their sort of program. The enrollment data, we're checking on it now as well. The head start piece, that sits inside the city budget, it's part of our budget in the city books, but literally goes right over our head, straight to head start, so it's a, it doesn't even come here anymore. So that's sat in the city budget for time of mourning. It's, I think, 214,000 if it goes to them. So that's, that just sits right there, and so we can take it if we want to. The city could cut it or something to it, that's, that's their appropriate, if they're not in ours.
It used to be a line item in our budget.
It was, yes, yes, years ago. That money actually, that money that's sitting in the city budget could come here to pay for our own people, and we had a piece in our budget, it came out of like six different grant, grant accounts, but yet that amount now, since it was passed over us, not even through us.
Along the same lines with the budget, we are talking to our vendors.
Yeah, we've got discussions with a couple.
In anticipation of making some savings, so we're moving in that direction as well.
Okay. An overview of the certificate certification. Just looking through the 20 pages of that.
That is, there are guidelines for healthy, hunger-free, it'll be on the board for adoption next meeting. Not to continue to talk, just two seconds. The community elder provision, we talked on since the free meals across the schools, we are filing that application right now. I do anticipate that, I think probably 70% of your schools will go through that provision. There's quite a few that are going to qualify, and some can actually merge together, so you're going to see part of few that are going to go in. We won't know until it's not approved by the state and feds, but I think right now, you're going to see most of your elementary, your middle schools, probably not high school, but a good number of your schools will fall for that provision, just because of the poverty that they certify.
That means free lunch, free lunch, free lunch and breakfast.
No, no, the high school definitely will not qualify based on its number and size. Some of the other schools, ASR example, won't, but there's, but I would say the majority of your other schools will. West Side possibly not, but the rest of the schools will definitely be more, so you just saw, she does a definite qualifier, without a doubt. So I think you'll see probably 12 elementaries, two of your mills, and a school going, so the majority of your schools. Again, changing face that we talked about the other night, and this is, you know, New Bergen has this, Veron has this, it's the changing face of what our cases come with every day.
Thank you for talking about that. Okay. Board Chairperson's report. I just wanted to say, I went to Twinderella, which was awesome. They did such a great job over there. My wife and my daughter went to Godspell twice, because it was so good the first time they went, again. And it was magnificent from what they said. And I just wanted to thank Mr. Jannelli, because our former member, Mr. Hawley, had called me about the Pembroke Playground golf tournament, and anybody who can join in, who's not working in the school system.
I'll take a person.
But it would be a big help, and it's a great project, and I want to thank Mr. Jannelli for working hand-in-hand with that, and I'm going to do my best to take the day off and go play golf and help out the cause. And that's about all I got. Does anybody else have any board reports, communications?
I would just like to make a comment that I went to Godspell also on Friday night, it was wonderful, really, really great play. And I did speak to someone who was involved in the play, who asked me, why aren't there steps coming up from the black box? I know, I know it's a prime.
You should ask that.
Because, you know, because there's so many people in the parking down there, and then coming up to that hill. Anyway, I'm sure it's something you've thought about.
We've asked about steps. There's still some steps.
I know, okay.
We've asked about elevations, we keep doing the chef there, too.
There wasn't plenty, there wasn't plenty of stairs on that home. There wasn't plenty of steps.
Mr. Jannelli.
There's a sidewalk that ends, but the stairs at the end, sidewalk.
Sidewalks in the north.
What I'd like to do is ask you, and we think you're late on the meeting, perhaps on April 22nd at 6 o'clock, if it's convenient, and what I'd like to do is, because, I'd like to have as many board members there as possible in addition to those on the committee. What I wanted to discuss is the idea of formulating the group, and the best word I can think of, it was kicked around last night, is coalition and work with Dr. Sal and talking points, but I think it's important that we get state holders in the city to understand our concerns, to be educated on those concerns, too. And I say educated, to the point of to understand why it's so important, what we make references to the poverty level or other issues, and what the impact is, to be able to have these talking points, be on to the information about it, and all this we could utilize with the lobbyists, who may be, at a point in time strategically say certain legislators are there, you may be able to talk to them, and if we be able to send out people who are knowledgeable on that particular issue that we want to talk about. Sal saying about the funded mandates relative to the two courses that we've been there as well as the 25 credits. So the council last night finally died with after years that we have to go to other places other than the city of Danbury. So I think at that point, we can engage them in this group as well as other people. So if 22nd works for most of us at 6 o'clock.
Monday, the 22nd.
It's asked of our agents before the meeting of the 24th, because I think we have too much on the agenda at that point.
Yes, that's busy today.
The time is, it takes.
6 o'clock.
If you want to do 6, that's convenient.
I don't know, I'm just, I don't know. I'm sure we have facilities.
6 or 5:30?
6, I think, for those that work 5:30, maybe tough. If we were to agree with them, I'd say 22nd, 6 p.m. And throw it out to all board members, that would appreciate their input, as well as the staff here, because I think their knowledge about the issues are invaluable. Thank you.
For everybody else.
Chair, I want to also do a shout-out to Godspell. On Friday, Amy was there, and I was selected to be a part of the show onstage on the nose to me. But I had the experience to see a couple rehearsals, and I just really want to congratulate Danbury High School Productions and our music department. I think it was a great example of how not only changes the students' lives, but it can change the community, and how important the arts are. I don't think there's a single person I watched the show that was deeply moved by it, with the new revived sense of community because of the message, and I think that that's really the ultimate thing about artists, and to know that our young artists really will experience that and see that reaction makes me very happy. I also want to thank Mr. Jannelli, Rachel, Dr. Sal, Joe, for coming to. I also want to thank Mr. Janelle, Rachel, Dr. Sal, Joe, for coming to, and also Kelly, for coming to our lineup ceremony over at the Republic Library, celebrating World Autism Awareness Day. It meant a lot to me that you all were there. We had a beautiful celebration, and we got to have the chief read to the kids, and we had music from kids from our district that are part of the community project, and we were able to raise a couple thousand dollars towards the first dance room in the public library in Connecticut, that would be housed in our public library. We also had Lee there with a table, trying to raise money also for the playground, so it was a really collaborative effort in the community, and I think you all best supported it. And in regards to the overview of the healthy food certification, and also a couple of questions that I have regarding food services, and I think this question's for you, Joe. Recently, there was an article that came out about school filling the Midwest and their use of leftover foods as steak home meals for students. I know the Connecticut food policies are not bearish, but if there's a way that we can find out, either through, by Brian, being our lobbyist, if it's an impediment on the state level due to legislation that we cannot, kind of take a look at this project that's happening in Midwest, where if there's leftover food, and there is students that need, that they can actually take that meal with them, and they have a system for wrapping them. If there's impediment, I think legislatively, I think that would be a worthwhile clause for us to also use our lobbyists to find out how we can go about clearing those roadblocks on the state level, and being able to implement that on the municipal level.
We do, we do some round back home on Fridays and stuff for some of the kids, yeah, there's some of that we do too. It's not a large scale, we do some.
Okay. Thank you.
Perfect. Thank you.
Rachel. Do we need to set a site meeting then, Joe?
You can, and not to mind the calendar more, we should get a finance committee meeting probably for mid-May, because obviously the city will adopt that first Tuesday in May, so we should probably at least get a, and we should have a framework of the state budget by that point as well. So I would say you'll have official cities, and they'll set the mill rate May 7th, so really any point after that, whether that's the 15th or so, something that, that timeline with that, at least start talking about what this kind of short main meeting.
May 8th is our main meeting.
So that's probably too tight to produce anything.
I mean, we'll, we'll tie it on that, but I mean, you know, we're in sites then, I mean, you know, work.
Does the 15th work for finance committee members?
Do you want to do the 15th, or do you want to do it before the, what's the next meeting?
22nd.
22nd, too late, Joe?
Um, no, it's not too late, I mean, what it means, it's all not going to be finals or the gallows down June, but at least we can, at least.
When do we got to get a peek at our, you know?
I got a peek, I got it.
I know, why do we got to get, I know, I don't want to get that peeked.
Wasn't that exciting?
I know, why do we got to get a peek at May is what I'm saying.
You'll have, you'll have May renewal data by about the 10th of May. We actually have April data, so any time after that.
15th, yeah, I'd like to do that.
Do you want to do, do you want to do the 15th as another, as a separate meeting?
Yes.
You don't want to do before the 22nd?
And what time do you want to do it, Joe?
Whatever, I'm, you all, whatever you want to do.
Can we do a 6 and then a 7 for facility?
Do both. Sure.
Might as well do both.
Okay? It's fine.
Meetings before the meetings, before the meetings.
Yeah, that's fine.
So 5:15, 6 o'clock finance, and 7 o'clock sites.
And Amy, do we need an ad hoc committee meeting in there? We set it for May 1st.
We did, we set it for May 1st, excellent.
Was that, I think you said 6 o'clock, you said it's an off Wednesday, we're not here the rest of the day.
Like the policy or somewhere?
And you want to do, yeah, we have policy. Okay.
And also, while you're adjusting your calendar, we have to complete our superintendent evaluation committee, and I'm looking at May 6 or 7. And those are up on my committee numbers.
5, 6. Is it?
May 5 is Sunday.
No, May 6.
6 through 7, Monday.
6 or 7?
Then we not be over that yet.
Can we do Tuesday, 7? Tuesday is 7, May, May the 7.
Okay, at 6 o'clock?
At 6 o'clock. Superintendent Evaluation Committee.
Any other meetings around there?
Yeah, Joe. But you're being held away tonight?
I did say 5:30 for May 1st, does that work for me? What do you do, rather than 6? 5:30 works for me, I think actually, because I'm a quite certain here.
Do we do a meeting, do we plan meetings in the future, or is that?
We're going to do that every Monday, Wednesday, Friday.
Rachel, is it, is it over, Debbie or I?
I can, I can.
I'll get the time, because it's going to get complicated.
He hasn't.
You're already there.
Everybody just be here before dinner, everything.
Where you're sleeping.
Ralph and them.
So let me for, sorry, Amy, yeah, 5:30 or 6? 5:30. 5:30.
5:30 and 5:00.
I do.
Say that's everything.
And then I just want to say, sadly, Ralph had there, No One Eats Alone event today, it's done very well. The principal and social worker, Monica Hassan, she did a great job, and staff were fabulous, policeman, fireman, high school students. It was great to see the middle school leadership up there for the fifth graders, just so that they could see a face that they might recognize next year. Thought that was, that was pretty special. And then also, the kids taught the policemen how to floss, that was also, I thought, like... It was pretty hysterical.
Yeah, cheerleading, and folks were, it was pretty, that was kind of in my schools.
And just one last thing for me, we had a, we had a board workshop on roles and responsibilities, kind of after a member spoke in a public forum. What is, what is the board's take on speaking at public forums as an individual board member?
As to, as to speaking as an individual from the community, or speaking on behalf of the board?
Speaking as an individual, mentioning that you're a board member, and saying your two cents, I mean, I, I think everyone has a right to say, you know, what's on their mind, but I was told differently when I first joined the board.
I think if you're the only board member there, and you want to represent the board, I mean, it depends on, on the context of the, the meeting, right?
Yeah, we all, we have to show care if you're representing the board. If you're, if you're there speaking as a parent, you can do that. If you, if you acknowledge yourself as a board member, and it comes across that you're speaking on behalf of the board, it has to be in alignment with what the board is saying. So I don't know what, I don't know that we have an actual written document, so let's just say that we all have to show good care as to what we're going to say if we're out in public.
Generally, public statements are made by the board, the board chair.
Right.
Just to keep thinking, that's the only one. Usually, if I'm at meetings, I'll never talk as a board member, qualified, although people know I'm a board member, but I'll state that this is my personal opinion, you know, whether, so at least I'm clear, I'm not speaking on behalf of the board. And I think it gives, you know, it gives some flexibility that position of the board chair has a position of speaking for all of us. You could be, and you know, things don't happen, you could be saying something that I could disagree with, and yet you're making it sound as if it's unanimous.
Right.
So I would just, you know, set a torque, for me, even stuff that I've written in the papers, I always try to quantify it and say it's my personal, and it has nothing to do with my position as a board, you know, elected official or anything like that.
Yeah.
I mean, if the person is, like for newspapers and interviews and people are interviewing, it's, I mean, they might be approaching you as a board member, you have to be pretty careful on what you say in, in, in the paper, or, or.
Very, very careful if you're being directly represented as a position.
I usually refer to the chair.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Exactly, it's pretty good, you know, he would help.
Yes, and that, and that's, it's just a good, I mean, I had, I had a couple of articles in the newspaper when I was on the zoning commission, that I, I did not acknowledge myself as a member of the zoning commission, it had to do with real estate in the area, and you just don't want to, I didn't want to speak on behalf of that board, because I was a member of it, you know, it's not, so we, we just want to be careful, we don't want anybody to misrepresent and stuff, or to get into trouble personally, you know, for, for saying something, so if we need to clarify it more, we can do that. You know, but it's, it's pretty hard, we can't, obviously, I'm not going to sit here, nobody's going to sit here and tell people you can't talk, you can't, you know, express opinions, just try to be careful not to express it as the opinion of the Board of Education.
My understanding is that people always assume that when you're on the board, you're speaking on behalf of the board, that's what's...
And they do assume that.
They do.
But no matter, but I, you know, I, I feel this way, and, and again, I'm an old timey. If I want to make a, a statement, and I know that he is chair, and if he's not at the meeting, I will call him up and say, you know, I'm going to make this statement tonight, you know, are, are you in agreement with what I'm going to say? Okay, I know, I have enough respect for the chair to run it by the chair, okay? And, and over the years, and before you newcomers came on, when we got invited to a function, say, like we raised was having graduation, and they would send us all invitation, if the chairperson could not make it, then the chairperson would designate someone to speak on his behalf. And that's the sort of way we handle it. So I'm not saying you can't say anything, but you really have to be careful how you say it, and how other people interpret what you're saying.
Right. So as, as an analogy, there's a hot button issue, I think, to pick a point of reference, would be charter schools. I'm sure out of the 11 members on the board, we're not unanimous on the feeling that charter schools, so for those that are pro or against it, speaking in a public forum, your position, you know, is not stating the position generally of the board. So that's why I say, you know...
So it depends on the subject.
Well, I would say the subject, I use the thing is to say, I'm only talking about personally. The fact that I'm on, you know, the fact I'm a board member, you can think that I'm talking, but I'm qualifying my statement, it, it's my personal statement, I'm not talking on behalf of the board members, and this is my feeling. So whatever they want to think, you know, it's up to them.
If you clarify it, that this is, you know, you can clarify it that clearly, you can say, I'm not speaking, I'm a board member, I'm not speaking on behalf of the board, my personal feeling is, you know, that at least you've made it clear enough there, because like I said, nobody should be, we're not sitting here saying because you got on board that you're going to be muted in the community, but we can address it further if we need to.
I think that would be, you know, because we could be here to admit that.
Yes, and we're going to be here until 8:30, and then we're going to go to check.
It's a good discussion, but you know, now's not the right time.
Yes.
And I think we sort of know what we're doing, and I think Rachel and the rest of you have been on the board long enough, you sort of, you know, know how to interpret it when we're out someplace back there.
Well, we have some new members and...
Yes.
Some new members, yeah.
Clarifying.
We can clarify stuff.
So we can clarify, but I think this would be a good hack in our, the meeting to have a brief discussion about this, because I think we have an executive session.
Yes, we have an executive session, at 8:30.
With regards to the new members, the anticipation of next year, we have a lot of new members, right, do you consider the idea of pointing a venture?
Yes.
With that new member, so that at least they would have some sort of clarity or understand what's happening.
Yes, we had a discussion about that.
Until it works.
Until it works, all right. All right, and with that, motion to move to executive session.
I may make a motion?
Second, Amy.